Well, welcome again and this time I will call the March 13th Board of Commissioners Paulding County Work Sessions order. And I don't see any elected officials with us this morning. We are extremely delighted to have Pastor Johnny Dix with us here from Picketts Mill Baptist Church. Johnny, thanks for coming.
Thank you for the wonderful tribute to Dr. Graham and what a great soldier of the cross and a great man of faith. Let's bow for prayer together. Dear Father, as we come to you in Jesus' name, we thank you for the privilege and the opportunity to pray and open an invocation for this wonderful group of people that lead our county. Dear Father, we pray for each of our commissioners, their families, we pray for all of our leaders and workers, all of our public servants within our county that serve our county so well. We pray for your watch, care, safety in their lives. We pray that you keep them out of harms way. Dear Father, we pray today that the decisions that are made on behalf of our county would reflect you and would honor you in every way. I pray, dear Father, that you would guard our hearts and lives, help us to be committed to you. Dear Father, help us to seek your face, turn from our wicked ways, and may we receive the healing for our land that we so desperately need. We ask it in Jesus' name and for his sake we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Dix, thanks so much. If I didn't say it, it's Picketts Mill Baptist Church on Highway 92. You've got a great congregation there. I'd like to ask the sign-up chief, Lieutenant, if you can bring that forward. And if you have any kind of device, phone or whatever, please silence that. At this time, I'd like to excuse one of our commissioners, Commissioner Crowe, who has got a family need to attend to, and he just wanted to come in and hopefully he'll be back, maybe during the middle of this meeting. So, do you have anything else?
Thank you, and I will try to be back. My father-in-law was left this morning by way of ambulance. My wife is with him now at the hospital. I need to check on her and him, so I'm just asking y'all to excuse me and forgive me for it, okay?
Under minutes, the January 23rd, 2018 amended board meeting minutes and the February 27th work session minutes along with the board meeting minutes are available for review. Under our positively Paulding segment this morning, we have a featured Academy Award winner, Mr. George Jones, to talk a little bit about the Highway 92 widening.
Hello, my name is George Jones. I'm the Transportation Director for Paulding County. I'd like to discuss the Stair Round 92 road widening project that recently commenced construction activities in Paulding County. This project will widen Stair Round 92 starting at Malone Road in Douglas County and build north to Nebo Road in Paulding County. This project is funded and managed by the Georgia Department of Transportation. The total project length is 6.93 miles, which includes three bridges. The Paulding County project length is 5.65 miles and the Douglas County project length is 1.28 miles. From Malone Road to Billcreek Parkway, the project will widen the existing Stair Round 92 from one lane in each direction to three lanes in each direction with a 20-foot to 24-foot raised median, including turn lanes at certain intersections. This section of road we design is a 55 mile per hour roadway. From Billcreek Parkway to Nebo Road, the project will widen existing Stair Round 92 from one lane in each direction to two lanes in each direction with a 20-foot to 24-foot raised median, including turn lanes at certain intersections. This section of road will be designed as a 45 mile per hour roadway. Counting up are not included as part of the project. All existing traffic signals will be rebuilt as part of the project to accommodate the road widening. This section of Stair Round 92 is designed to accommodate an estimated average daily traffic volume of 33,000 vehicles per day in the year 2039. The construction contract was awarded to C.W. Matthews Construction Company in an amount of $51,173,350. The construction date for this project was October 17th, 2017, and the current completion date is July 31st, 2012. Please keep in mind there will be lane closures on Stair Round 92 and side road closures at certain intersections through the course of the project. The Georgia Department of Transportation has worked to minimize the delays by not allowing lane closures through peak hour time areas and minimizing road closures to a maximum of 10 days per location. With each side road closure, a sign D to arrival will be in place to provide access. This is the first Georgia Department of Transportation road widening project in Paulding County since June 1995, so obviously we're very happy to get this project underway. This project will considerably improve the travel conditions on Stair Round 92.
Notice my dirt went the farthest. And Ms. Skipper just told me that Representative Graves was honorable mention in the Academy Awards. Scott told me not to try to be funny, but...
He should stick with that. It is great to have Chief Pelfrey and a lot of his white shirts in here this morning to discuss lifesaver commendations for Paulding County Fire Department and the Metro Ambulance personnel.
So, thank you for having us today. My name's Steve Mapes. For those that don't know me, I've been with the county for 22 years. So, quick preamble, in case everybody in this room's not aware, firefighters, marshals, sheriffs, deputies, police officers, we're a little bit different. That was supposed to be funny.
It's early.
We know your chief is, but continue on.
We go into untenable situations and we don't want credit. We don't want to be recognized, but we're going to do that today anyway. But if you ask anybody in this room, law enforcement, fire, police, EMS, every single one of them would say, "I'm just doing my job. It's a privilege to serve," something like that. So, before I get started with our presentation, if you've watched the news today or last night, you saw Cobb County firefighter went to work yesterday morning and she didn't come home. She suffered a heart attack while at work and her crew did everything they could to save her. She went to Kennistone and she was pronounced. So, Stacy Lee Bullware, end of watch last night, 19 years of service to Cobb County. On October 5th, 2017, in Paulding County, we had a similar incident with a much better outcome. So, what happened was, we were dispatched to a tractor-trailer fire, very large tractor-trailer fire carrying hazardous materials, flammable liquids. We sent a lot of trucks there. Our first unit on the scene confirmed that this was a flammable liquid fire, instructed Engine One, the first truck, fire truck to arrive, to begin fire suppression activities. So, they went to work. Shortly after they started doing that, the crew was breaching the back of the truck, which was on fire, and the lieutenant on Engine One collapsed. His crew, that I'll introduce you to in a minute, immediately recognized something was wrong, dragged him away from the fire, pulled his SCBA off, checked his pulse, he was in cardiac arrest. Immediately initiated life-saving interventions. Got an AED, shocked him, got a profusing rhythm back, and for about the next 10 minutes while they were on the scene, continued to treat our lieutenant. Few minutes later, Metro Ambulance 802 arrived on the scene, loaded this gentleman up in the ambulance and took him to Paulding ER about half a mile away. They spent an hour, hour and a half there, stabilized him, innovated him, he was on a ventilator. Another Metro Ambulance crew, a critical care crew, came in and they transported him emergency to Kennistone Hospital where he was directly admitted to the critical care unit. He spent 11 days in a coma in critical care at Kennistone, and on the 11th day, he awoke. Spent two more days in a step-down unit, and on October 18th, 2017, he was discharged from home 14 days after he went into cardiac arrest on a fire scene. So, it's my honor to introduce my friend and colleague, Lieutenant Kevin Van Dyke, our survivor. On January 15th, he came back to work full-time on a truck with a little extra hardware in his chest, I think. So, we'd like to recognize the lifesavers who were there that night who took care of Kevin. So, I'm going to call Chief Pelfrey and LeAnn Van Dyke and Kevin Van Dyke up to the front, and I'm going to call out a few names. By the way, we're presenting the State of Georgia and the Paulding County Fire and Rescue Lifesaver Award. It's one of the highest awards that we can give. As I said earlier, we don't recognize each other and we're embarrassed to be recognized, but we're doing it today because this was an extraordinary situation. In addition, the American Heart Association has provided commendation letters and certificates for saving a life as well. And had it not been for the quick action of all of these people, Lieutenant Van Dyke would not have been standing here tonight, this morning. So, please join me in welcoming Engine One, Brandon Maple, to the front. On Truck Two, Lieutenant Brandon Kirksey. FAO Andy Dale. FAO and paramedic Brad Bowlin. On Engine Three, Lieutenant Scott Brown. FAO and paramedic Will Reiner. FAO Brandon Plushow. Couple more. Division Chief Kevin Hart, also a paramedic. Battalion Chief John Parker. Metro Ambulance 802 that transported Kevin to the hospital initially, paramedic Griffin Morris and Lydia McIntyre. And last but not least, the critical care unit that volunteered to come in and take our Paulding guy to Kennistone, Chris Aldrich, Karen Robinson and Michael Murphy.
Awesomeness, great, great morning. Entertaining motion to adjourn. We have no invited guests. All of your special guests, repeat that. Good award number one is discuss action to award the replacement of ceiling tiles within the Dallas Library to the low bidder, Hugh McMartin, in the amount of $63,433.78. Ms. Pollard to present. You're better?
I am, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a project that we are partnering with the state, so it's 50% funded by the state, 50% funded by the county, and it is to make improvements to the Dallas Library. Specifically, this will replace all the ceiling tiles and we're recommending award to the low bidder. We had three participants and bids ranged from $63,000 and some change up to $72,000. Any questions?
Miss Waddell, she has a smile on her face.
Yes, she does.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Good award number two, discuss action to award the school road over Dunaway Branch culvert replacement project to the low bidder DC Hudson Contracting in the amount of $86,259.59.
Sorry, I was engrossed in the ceiling tiles. Sorry about that. Again, this is a culvert replacement project on a school road over Dunaway Creek branch. The existing pipes out there are rotten, they're failing, they need to be replaced. And what we're proposing to do is install a aluminum culvert that will be put in its place. It's lightweight, they're easy to install. We have a 90-day completion date from notice to proceed on this contract, so if you're awarded. And again, the project cost of this is $86,259.59. And I'm available to answer any questions if you have any.
And I see on there you have the three bids.
Yes, sir. And what's it, DC Hudson was the lowest bidder on this. We've used him before on the Lee Road Bridge project over Pegamore Creek and we liked his work very much.
Are there other pipes that are starting to deteriorate? I guess they all deteriorate continually, right?
Yes, sir. There's quite a few pipes in this county that are in that shape. We have, it seems like every other month at least a pipe that's kind of an emergency repair job. You know, these metal pipes are coated with a, you know, like an asphalt bottom and over time they rust out, you know, the water, the sand going through, erodes away the coating and then the rusting starts. And so, when the bottoms rust out, the strength is compromised and then at some point they're going to fail. Luckily, we've been catching them before they come to the failure point, but like I said, it's a lot of work, a lot of pipes.
Questions come in. Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under reports from committees and departments, Ms. Dieter Holden, the Elections and Registration Supervisor, is here to report. And it's nice to have Miss Peggy Wills, the chairman of that board here also.
We also have Ms. Bobby Wills, who is also Bobby Wills. Bobby Lee, who is also one of our member story. I didn't mean to marry your Peggy there. That's a hard act to follow after those firefighters come up here, so I'll be very brief in this. I think that I have a picture here that I want to... Many of you know that we have been going through a process of consolidating our precincts. And a lot of people say, "Why in the world are you doing this?" Well, that's what I'm here for today. I also wanted to let you know that I did have an item under new business. I requested that to be removed this morning with very short notice. I went to Frank and asked him to remove that. There's some things that I need to revisit on those contracts. So, I apologize for short notice, but I wanted to let you know that that's why I had to do that. Our precincts are going down from 14 to 12. As you can see here, here's a list of those. Shelton Elementary School, Burnt Hickory Park, Moses Middle School, Westridge Church, Watson Government Complex, Raggedale Elementary, Paulding County High School, Hiram High School, Taylor Farm Park, Austin Middle School, Nevo Elementary School and Skoggins Middle School. Believe it or not, by cutting our precincts by two for Election Day, it does save this county a lot of money. And that's why we do this. I can't, you know, if I'm going to be tasked with being responsible for taxpayer dollars, I have to look at every aspect of this, and I cannot justify having precincts opened that just a few hundred voters go to and pay the staff that we have to pay to go out on Election Day to do that. So, we always are looking at ways that we can save money, and this is one of them. When we did this, we based it on a few reasons. We went to the board, we talked to them, we look at numbers, especially now that Paulding County is an early voting county. We have a lot of people that vote early. Over half of our voters vote early. So, that was one of the reasons that we decided to step back and look at this and make some We are going to be changing some of the early voting locations, and it's to benefit this county. If we're going to take away precincts, we're not going to just do that and not add something back to help the voters. We've had a lot of people in the community say, "I would vote if you would put something and make it convenient for me," and that's what we have tried to do. I gave you a list of numbers that I want us to focus on because you will see in those numbers, the number of people that are registered to vote. It looks like this, I have it in front of you. The people that are registered to vote in those precincts, you look at the number that voted early compared to what they voted on Election Day, and you see that our numbers are astronomical for early voting. We voted over 43,000 people early in the 2016 election and only 19,000 on Election Day. Early voting's the way to go. That's, you know, when we look at this from a staffing issue, when there's a problem and you're voting during early voting, we can help you, but if you wait until Election Day and you don't know there's an issue, maybe you didn't transfer your registration here. Maybe you moved, maybe you've been purged because you haven't voted. We can't fix that on Election Day. So, we try to encourage people to vote early because if there is an issue, we can help them. It's important to us that everyone who's eligible to vote gets to vote. So, during this time period of early voting, we have 21 days, and if there is a problem, we can correct it and people get to vote that way. I also want to touch on the fact that I know that some people don't agree with us voting in churches, but we only have one church up here and it is going to serve as an Election Day precinct and it is also going to serve as an early voting location for one week. When we pick these polling locations, we're looking for three things. The most important is that it is handicapped accessible. Number two, we look at the parking. Parking is a premium when it comes to an Election Day precinct. Several years ago, some of you may remember it, we had so many to turn out to vote in a governor's election that they were parking on the side of Highway 92 to walk to the precinct. That was not good for me, and I have learned my lesson. So, when we have Election Day polling locations, we're going to have plenty of parking. I'm not going to have someone hurt on my watch. And 92, you all know, in the crossroads area, is a very, very traveled road. So, when we're looking at these locations, we look at ADA accessibility, parking, and we look at space. If we're going to consolidate precincts, I'm going to send out more voting machines to be able to accommodate the voters because I don't like the voters of Paulding to have to stand in line for any length of time. So, that's something that we talk about, we consider every aspect of it, and that's how we make our decisions. So, I'm hoping that you'll accept these precinct changes. We will be mailing out 104,000 precinct cards to every voter in this county within the next two weeks. I want to tell the public, the voters, if you don't receive a card within the next 30 days, contact our office. We want to know why you have not received a card. These cards will have your new precinct on them, they will let you know where to go, the address of the precinct is on there. It'll also give you a listing of who your elected officials are. So, there again, if you don't receive a card, contact our office. The last thing that I would like to talk about is kind of away from the precinct issue, but y'all know what we went through in 2016 with people talking about the voting equipment being hacked, that it was a vulnerable system, and I'm here to tell you that it is not. There is a new system on the horizon. We have met with our legislative delegation, and we don't see that being implemented until possibly 2022 or 2024. Our system we have is, oh, we've had the voting machines since 2003, and y'all know how technology changes by the day. But I want to let the voters, I want to let the commissioners, I want everyone to hear me when I say this. The voting machines we have cannot be hacked. They are never networked, they are never connected to the internet. There's a memory card in those voting machines that is taken out, sealed and locked and brought to this office on Election Night for upload. There is no way someone can hack those machines. So, we will continue to use those machines until the state, if it may tells us otherwise. But voting in Paulding County is safe. I encourage anyone who wants to visit our office to come see our machines, to come watch the process. We'll start our L&amp;A testing in the middle of April. The public can come see this process, but please, please rest assured and know that when you vote in Paulding County, your vote counts. Do any of y'all have questions in thing you want to say?
Could you highlight specifically which of these locations are the early voting locations?
Okay, up here of the voting precincts out of the 12, Watson Government Complex is always an early voting location. We are the only location that votes for 21 days prior to the election. And then, the week prior to the election, we will open up others, and that's why I removed the contracts because we are going to revisit some of those locations. But on this list here, you have Watson Government Complex and you have Westridge Church, which will serve the week prior to the election and Election Day. So, there again, we're stepping back, revisiting those contracts, and I'll bring that back to you when we have additional information on those.
I'd just like to make a comment. I think a few years ago, a couple of years ago, we talked about this too, and I don't know when it changed, but we actually used to have 28 polling locations in Paulding County. If you've ever tried to visit those in one day, it's pretty tough, but I know a few folks that have done it. And, but with early voting coming on, it changed things so much because we got so many of the voters that were able to early vote, and so therefore those precincts went from 28. I think we went right down to 14.
We do, that was in 2009.
And then, and so things have changed through the year, but it's because of the early voting. And when you look at the early voting numbers, there's a lot of people that have that opportunity for whether it's a week or the three weeks to get out to those locations. And so therefore, they've been able to decrease the voting locations on Voting Day, but give those locations more help. And in the long run, it works out good for everybody, so thanks for your work. I know you guys are always looking at what you can do to make things better for the public, and I appreciate you and your board.
Thank you. Anything else? I also want to add this. We've also seen a decrease since we have the satellite voting locations and the early voting and the paper absentee ballots. When we went into the presidential election of 2008, when early voting started, people were not really sure about it, and we had 4,000 paper ballots for that presidential election. presidential election. That number has been cut in half, and that is a huge cost savings to the county because the, the time you process an absentee ballot from the application process to receiving that voted ballot back in, you're looking at about three dollars and fifty cents per ballot. So, that's a cost savings. People now, you know, early voting's just a thing for them, and they, you know, they don't request those paper ballots anymore. So, that's another thing that we, we heavily looked at whenever we started this process. But if any of you wanna come down and look at the maps or have questions, just please contact me and let me know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Public participation on agenda items. We're glad to have Mr. Mark Stevenson come forward and share with us on, um, old business item number one.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chairman, I'm sorry. Uh, my name is Mark, Mark Stevenson. I'm here to discuss zoning action two thousand seventeen dash ten dash Z. Um, I, I represent Rick Shaw, which is a landowner that has applied for this zoning. Uh, I also own a number of other development building companies adjacent to this piece of land, uh, where we develop and build. Uh, so some of my comments today are kind of a little bit broader than the, than the specific, um, zoning that we're trying to get done. So, um, uh, yesterday, um, your, your senior staff was very gracious, uh, to meet with me, uh, to kind of discuss some of the open zoning items. I have three steps that, um, that I can't live with at the moment, and, and we'll go over those in detail in a few minutes. But, um, I cha, I challenged, I challenged your staff, and by the way, Commissioner Crowe and Commissioner Kamau were at that meeting and sat in and made some comments, uh, just so, uh, everybody knows who was there. Um, I am, I am, my, my comments today are meant to be very constructive, they're meant to be challenging, and they're meant to push Paulding into looking at different ways of doing zoning and dealing with businesses. Um, the process that we have, the, the zoning process, the process that we have now is not transparent, um, and it does a lot of things that discourages new zonings and makes it more difficult for people who, who zone to compete in the county. Uh, and that, and some of my comments are going that direction. So, the first, the first, the first item is that, um, when, when a, when a developer or someone comes and re-zones something in Paulding County, um, it is impossible at the beginning, before you pay your five thousand dollar fee or three thousand dollar fee, to figure out how much it costs to build out the site. We literally have to apply for the zoning and wait till twenty-four hours before it's voted on to find out how much it's gonna cost for our site to be, for, for, for our zoning to be done. Uh, that is not transparent, it's not fair, and it, and it, and it creates a huge amount of work for us trying to either negotiate with the county to undo it, or go back to our landowner or the people we're buying the land from and reset the whole deal. Very disruptive. Um, I would suggest a better way to do it is to, is to make all that stuff transparent upfront where we can, where, where we can much earlier, uh, learn what those costs are. My zoning came back with nineteen, nineteen stipulations that cost ten thousand five hundred dollars per lot, which is over two million dollars for my site. Now, my zoning was a little bit smaller in this case, so initially it was a one-starter. We spent hours, months ago, working through those things and knocked it down, and, and we have, you know, staff has understood some of my concerns, and we did get it down to, um, twenty-five hundred dollars per lot plus one item, we have no idea what it costs still. And I'll go through those in a minute. So, um, in, in, in other counties, in other municipalities where I do zonings, we don't have to deal with this. We don't get jagged with thousand-dollar lot, lot fees at the, at the last minute. We know well, very early in the process what we're dealing with so we can negotiate properly, and it makes it easier to finance our deals. So, um, do you have the, do you have the, um, zoning steps in front of you? Did they give that to you?
It's in the backup.
It's in the backup, we got it.
Okay, you got it. Okay, so, um, I've got, I've got, uh, three specific zoning steps that, um, I would, I would like you to consider changing. Again, I don't like the fact that there's nineteen zoning steps. I believe the reason there's nineteen zoning steps is because many of the ordinances in the county are outdated and old, so over the years, instead of fixing the ordinances, what has happened is the staff has added zoning step. Don't fix the ordinance, add a zoning step, that gets you through it. What you ought to do is go fix the zone, fix the ordinance. Everybody can tell upfront what's gonna happen, you understand what the cost is. There ought to be three or four zoning steps because of very unique items on the site. Um, I can live with most of zoning steps, but there's three or four that are very onerous, and I just kind of run, wanna run them past you and go, go to that. So, the first, the first one I want to talk about is zoning step number ten. Uh, only, owner, developer agrees to submit a water and sewer plan at preliminary plat submittal, including an analysis of existing infrastructure improvements may be required. So, um, may I continue speaking? I didn't know I had a time limit. I need, I need about ten more minutes.
I need to hear what Mr. Stevenson has to say.
We'll make a motion.
Make a motion, may I allow Mr. Stevenson to continue?
Motion to continue, sector.
Mr. Stevenson, I will second the motion.
Thank you.
Now, motion to second all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Crowe, welcome back. Is everything okay?
Yes, and clarification. My lot does not carry a cell phone, so. She's smarter than us.
So, may I have one more minute? Thank you. Okay, so zoning, so zoning, zoning step ten, uh, it, when, when a developer builds a site, it has to be, it has to put in the infrastructure that's on its site. There is also sewer infrastructure between the site and the sewer plant, there is also water infrastructure between the site and sewer plant that has capacity limitations. And at some point, those, a lift station might hit capacity, or the sewer plant might hit capacity and be upgraded. What this step means is that nobody in the county keeps up with those capacity situations, um, upfront, and we apply, hang on a second, let me finish. We, 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 we have to go and file a preliminary plat, and then the county can say, "Oh, this lift station needs a pump upgrade." Fifty thousand dollars if you wanna keep going. Or, the, the, um, sewer plant is gonna run out of capacity, you can only pull fifty permits instead of two hundred permits. I needed to know that upfront. Uh, the county needs to know that upfront. I, I did a zoning in Woodstock about three months ago, a very complicated zoning, and I left the zoning with a letter of sewer capacity and water capacity that said, "If you build these lots within X number of months, the sewer system works." That is what Paulding County needs to do. Now, in order to do that, you have to plan and know what all those upgrades are upfront and fix the, um, the tap fee where if it is not covering it, everybody pays it, so when, everybody gets it, one developer is not getting stuck with, with, with this infrastructure, or they're not held up artificially because, because things have not been planned. It's a, it's a very different way of doing business. This is the way it was done when things were going through the cracks, but it is obsolete. I, I compliment the, um, commission for wanting to do, you're, you've done a moratorium and you're gonna, you're gonna change, you're gonna put new zoning categories in, do not stop there. Fix the stuff and help us, help us understand our costs so that we can be competitive. Okay? So, I cannot live with that, I cannot live with a zoning step where I don't know what it costs. I can't. I, I need to know if there's off-site infrastructure costs, and nobody can tell me right now. All right? So, that's, that's my own unknown one. Number two, um, step number nine, owner, developer agrees to participate in the Brazile Mountain Water Service improvements. Um, that step is a little bit mysterious, but the county has told me that that means that my site needs to pay one thousand dollars per lot when I build a permit to help pay for this, this improvement. Now, the Brazile Mountain Improvement was a water tower that was built many years ago. Uh, the water tower gives pressure to many of the homes in Po, in, in the Cedar Crest corridor, so everybody in Seven Hills, everybody in Bentwater, there's thousands and thousands of homes that benefit from this, this upgrade. It's already been paid for, but instead of recouping the cost from everybody, you know, the, the, the water system customers aren't paying a piece, the, uh, the tap fees apparently aren't covering it, they've decided that only on new zonings will they charge this fee. So, there's very few, there's been three new zonings in the last five years, there's a few on the agenda, and there's, there's gonna be more coming, you'll eventually pay for it, but it creates a massive competitive disadvantage. Literally, the builder next door that has a lot that has, doesn't have to be zoned can pay a thousand dollars less for their permit than I did. Now, you may not think that's a lot of money, but when you're building a two hundred thousand dollar house and we, we count nails, it is a huge, uh, competitive disadvantage. I, I, I suggest that a better way to do it would be to simply raise the tap fee for everybody and have everybody pay the same fee, and you can raise it a thousand dollars, I'm glad to pay it, but make my competitor pay it too where there's a level of playing field. Uh, secondly, on the Brazile Mountain, we did, we did an open records request and came up with the, the original report that suggested on how this is to do it, and there's a whole multi-page recitation that, in fact, tap fees were going to be used to pay for the Brazile Mountain upgrade. Somewhere along the line, somebody changed the rule to, let's just charge the new zonings. Now, it's hard to go change tap fees, but again, we have an outdated system, let's go fix the system, treat everybody the same so we can be competitive. I have a hundred competitors in my marketplace, and I'm gonna compete against thousands and thousands of lots that do not have to go through zoning. You're already asking me to upgrade my zoning with larger lots, you want better facades on the house, and you really want me to pay another thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars per lot? Really? That's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this site, and I'm not getting any extra lots. My zoning does not give me extra lots. I could just stay with R two. So, I have to pay five hundred and fifty thousand, or I stay with R two, no change in life. I get a better product if I go with PRD because I can match the other part of the neighborhood. So, again, I would, I, 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 I can't live with that. Uh, the third, the third one is the, uh, is step number six, owner, developer agrees to enter a development agreement with Paulding County to mitigate traffic concerns. Now, there's two pieces to that, this, there's an onsite infrastructure piece that we're negotiating, and I'm in total agreement, we've gotta figure out how to do it. That does not benefit anybody outside of my site. So, we need to pay for that, and we need to negotiate whatever that agreement is and pay for it, we just haven't done it yet. Uh, the second piece of it is there's an intersection, Seven Hills Boulevard and, um, Nature Walk Parkway, which is the entrance of my subdivision that has been slated to have a red light. They want this site to pay about a hundred thousand dollars to fund that, in, in, that intersection upgrade. Well, the Seven Hills developer, that was waived. The Nature Walk developer, that was waived. There was no requirement to participate in that. Now, all of a sudden, we have, we have, um, and by the way, there's another parcel out front where the county only charged twenty-five thousand dollars for participation on a hundred and seventy-two lot subdivision. Now, I got a two hundred lot subdivision, you want me to throw in a hundred thousand dollars on something that benefits everybody. To me, this is something that should have been planned, it should have worked in the billing permit fees and tap fees, or whatever fees you want, and everybody should be charged fairly. So, I've got, I've got twenty-five hundred dollars per lot, which is five hundred and fifty thousand plus an unknown sewer cost that you can throw on me once I file my preliminary plat, and as of today, my site is not economically billable because of that. So, um, I don't want any breaks, I wanna be, I just wanna be treated the same. And I think, I think the county would be better off if that, if that, that occurred. So, um, my request to you today is to do one or two things. If you wanna get this over with, I'd love to finish it. Um, I, I'd ask that you, you pass this with those three steps deleted. Uh, however, I am in no hurry on this thing, I'll put this thing out a year and a half before I need the lots. Uh, staff and the commissioners have indicated they may want to do more work on this and look at my comments and see if this is appropriate to make some adjustments to. I'm more than happy to do a table, and if you wanna go that route, I would advise you put it back on the agenda for the July meeting to give us a good time, get, get to the election, give staff time to meet, and the commissioners time to really think this out a little bit more. It's up to you, I mean, you have other alternatives as well. Uh, I really appreciate the extra time, uh, I think I'm thirty second under my extra ten minutes, so any questions or comments?
I have one. And I don't normally talk to this sort of thing, but I do think it's disingenuous to say that this staff does not plan. I've been here twenty-one years, and all twenty-one of them, there have been stipulations on zoning. Many of these stipulations can be found in the Development Regulation Book, which, as you know, is a quite lengthy document, so there are ways to find the answers to what you're talking about. Also, the Brazile Mountain water, uh, fee has been on every rezoning that I can recall in the last couple of years. So, that was certainly discoverable. Um, and I'm sure the staff has things to say otherwise, but I don't think that it's fair to the staff to say they do not plan.
May I speak?
Certainly.
So, um, I, 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 I don't believe there's gonna be any argument in this room that Paulding County is dozens of years behind in planning. I'm not saying you don't plan, there's, there's plan books all over this county, there's four or five multi-year plans, most of which are ten or twelve years behind in implementation. You don't plan, you don't, you don't think ahead, you don't communicate it to the developers.
And again, I think that's a disingenuous.
You can call me disingenuous, it's the truth, and it's the fact, and everybody in the room knows it.
Well, and I think people disagree with you.
Well, and then that, that's fine, that's fine.
And I think you should show more respect to the staff than that.
Okay. This, the, the, uh, public participation isn't meant to be a, a public hearing, so I appreciate your comments, Mark.
Okay.
And, uh, Ms. Skipper certainly deserved to respond, and, uh, glad we did, but, um, let's move on.
I will, I will say one thing, Dave. You, you can, you can sit down. We've got a process, and to say things aren't transparent is not fair. Um, there's a, there's a process where things go through planning and zoning, and there's all kind of, um, there's a planning and zoning meeting, and they make a recommendation to send on to us, and there's all kind of work that goes into that. The process is transparent, and I, our staff, we count on our staff to look out for our county, look out for the citizens of county. And there's actually things in the past, and I think you and I discussed this, because things that have happened in the past that I don't agree with, I wasn't here and I don't agree with it. And sometimes when we allow things to happen, whether it's staff planning the zoning or Board of Commissioners, it, it, last stop comes to the Board of Commissioners. And builders or developers or whoever else are allowed to do certain things, sometimes what happens is years down the road, somebody else has to pay for that. That homeowner doesn't know, people aren't aware, there's traffic congestion that have happened, um, there's school issues. But so many times what happens is the, the Board of Commissioners, the government, backed by the taxpayers, end up fixing the problem. And there've been times in the past that I feel like things weren't looked at correctly, and, and we're dealing with some of those problems now. But to say things aren't transparent, um, there's, that's not correct. Um, I, I sure don't wanna bring elections into it, but I hope that whoever's... I sure don't wanna bring elections into it, but I hope that whoever's sitting on this board today and in the future, years to come, will always look out for the best interest of the citizens of the county, the citizens that live in the county, because we've gotta look out for them, because at the end of the day, they're the ones that are gonna pick up the tab. And I know that the staff has given you a lot of time, we spent a lot of time yesterday, and we didn't agree on a lot of things. But we have a process, and that process can be gone through, and there's a lot of time when you're in a planning and zoning meeting for people to speak on both sides, and hopefully we can work through this, but I expect our staff, and I expect myself, and I expect my fellow commissioners, our county attorney to look out for the citizens of this county, look out for the county as a whole. I may not always agree with what has to happen, but at the end of the day, I do not expect our staff or anybody else to make a decision for somebody that's gonna help that person out that's gonna cost the taxpayers money years down the road and thus not know about it. So we'll get on, I appreciate your comments, I appreciate the board allowing you to speak more than your five minutes, that's something that I have fought for up here, to make sure that landowners and citizens in this community have the right to come to these meetings and be heard, I think that has to happen, okay? So I do appreciate that. And sometimes we'll agree to disagree, and we'll move on, but we will talk again. Thank you.
And just one concluding remark, the purpose of the moratorium by the Board of Commissioners and the staff's central research and contribution to that is to reevaluate and come up with solutions.
With a 5-0 vote.
I'm gonna chime in at that, I'm the one that moved this thing forward for the moratorium so we can look things, some stipulations, and I have spent a lot of hours with Mark yesterday, I want y'all to know that this staff here at five of these that are sitting here today, or we spent some time with Mark yesterday discussing this, and we don't agree on everything. Our job up here is to protect the citizens, to protect what's happening around the citizens, and I understand what Mark Stevens' agenda is, is to sell houses, to make a living, make money, but our interest is this county, not how much money we make on a house. So forgive us if we cross swords on that, I'm not gonna be caught selling the people out for the purpose of building houses a certain way.
Okay, let's move on, consent agenda, discuss action on two consent agenda items. Number one is to appoint Matt Lowe to build the unexpired term of Chris Wheeler on the Planning and Zoning Commission as representative for post one, with a term ending December 31st, 2018. And number two, and bear with me, we require you to read all this, declare items listed as surplus and approve their disposal through auction or trade. The Sheriff's Department has car unit S-06, I'm sorry, 1-06, 2004 Crown Vic, serial The Fire Department has truck unit 543, a 2002 Ford Explorer, serial number 1FMZU72K62UD56883. And under the Parks and Recs Department, truck unit 452, 1995 Ford F250, the serial number of 1FTHF25YXSN884491. Would any of the commissioners like to move either of those two items for regular business? Here's none, leave them on the consent agenda, and under all business, discuss action on 2017-10-Zulu, application by Rick Shaw Real Estate LLC to rezone approximately 27.5 acres from R2 suburban residential to PRD planned residential development for subdivision development in Seven Hills, properties located in land lots 484, 485, 524, 525, 556, District 3, Section 3. North of Nature Walk Parkway, east of Williams Road, in post four, the recommendation was approval with a vote of 5-01 with 19 stipulations, it's tabled through December 12th, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting. Pass that mic down to the slideman. You have any updates or comments, Ian?
At this time, don't really have anything to add, just the applicant presented two options he seemed willing to entertain, and Chris Robinson's here as well, if there's any questions you have for him.
Board, have any additional comments or considerations or questions?
Well, I don't guess at this time. I'm good with the 19 stipulations.
Any other comments? Old Business number two, discuss action to approve 2017-14-Zulu, application by JNA Construction and Home Builders to rezone approximately 71.38 acres from R2 suburban residential low-ditch and quality residential development district to build 150 residential homes, property of 71.38 acres in size and located in land lots 616, 617, 618, 619, in District 3, Section 3. It's on the east side of Cedar Crest Road, south of Cedar Crest Boulevard, in post four. The recommendation by the Planning Commission was denial, a vote of 4-1-1 with 19 stipulations. This was tabled on January 23rd, 2018, at the Board of Commissioners meeting. Any further discussion on this, Old Business item number two?
It also had 19 stipulations.
Old Business number three, is discuss action to adopt Resolution 18-10 confirming executive session for the purpose of pending potential litigation from February 27th, 2018, at 7:00 PM, Board of Commissioners meeting.
And again, this is the resolution, because we went into closed session twice that day, so you adopted the one for the morning, and this is the one for the evening.
We hit that in the backup materials, so no discussion needed. Under New Business, discuss action to approve the Chairman's nomination of James T. Trevor Hess to the position of Chief Marshal, and it's quite an honor to have someone that's been among us for many years. Lieutenant Hess with the Santa Fe Trail High School, I never found out where is that from, New Mexico or something?
Kansas.
From 1999 to 2013, Trevor was working for the Polk County Sheriff's Office, the detention center for several years, the patrol division, the crime suppression unit, and then 2013 to today, he has been with the Marshal Bureau, currently in charge of the day-to-day, he's been on patrol division there, the security division, and Sergeant of the Patrol Unit. His certifications include basic peace officer certification, field training officer certification as a radar operator and lidar operator, he's an instructor in, just a general instructor and then a firearms instructor, I'm not gonna read all the advanced training that he's had, but I would like to point out a couple of awards. In 2003, Lieutenant Hess pursued the Distinguished Service Medal at Paulding County in the Sheriff's Office, and more recently, in 2012, he was awarded the Medal of Merit by the Paulding County Sheriff's Office. So anybody else feel free to comment, but Lieutenant Hess has certainly shown his initiative and attitude toward our code enforcement in the county, and it's gonna be great for the board to vote on him this afternoon. Other comments?
I'd like to say that he's already on the job, I've discussed some things with him, he's taking care of some matters, and I'm, in fact, I asked him this morning when I came in, I said, "How did you get that done?", and I'm not gonna elaborate on what he said, but he's taking care of his job.
I appreciate the work he's doing, and the work that I've seen the department doing, working together as a team, so thank you, look forward to this afternoon's vote.
And it's also, I think it's worth mentioning, I appreciate Frank and the work that you've done as veteran chief marshal to help in that area, and I'm glad you're here to be able to help in that way, and looking forward to the future. Thanks also, Frank, for all your work on this, and if you wanna add some comments?
I appreciate it, Trevor has done an outstanding job for the last couple of months, he's really helped us get in moving forward, as y'all can recall, just last meeting, we were here and had a change in the ordinance, which hadn't been done since the adoption of that ordinance 31 years ago, so he's been involved in helping us with that and animal control and moving the business forward for this board and for the county, so I think it's a very good recommendation, I support it 110%.
New Business number two, discuss action to authorize the Chairman to enter to an agreement with Kelly Landscape Management Incorporated for the roadside right-of-way turf maintenance services contract in an amount of $176,087.73. The contract provided, provides for finished mowing, string trimming, edging, and litter pickup of approximately 65 acres, of which 2.5 of that's the median, and also 54, 55.44 acres on the roadside shoulders on various county roads, and the backup material have a list of all the county roads, which has increased over the last couple of years. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, this is the contract we've had, this will be our third year with Kelly Landscaping Services. We had initial year, and then we had an option of two more years, provided both parties were in agreement with the work and the contract, we've been very happy with the work provided by Kelly. The roads, the turf areas look very good, they clean up the litter every two weeks, so it looks really nice, and unfortunately, there is a cost associated with this that we're paying, but it's something that we recommend. We do 17 cycles per year, that's mowing, edging, litter pickup, goes through late March through the late October. I can answer any questions on this if you have any.
The only thing that I thought of in reading the material was, again, the growth of this program, and of course, I guess ideally, you'd have 100% of your roads covered, but as far as the selection of the roads?
Typically, they've been projects that the DOT has worked on, where we've done roadway and associated landscaping for the sides of the roads and meeting areas like that, so you're right, this program has grown over the last three years, and it will continue to grow in the future as we add new roadway projects and intersection projects.
Other comments?
George, would you mind naming a couple areas or roads that, just for the public, because I've had a couple of questions on it, but yeah, and it's gonna continue to grow.
Certainly, Commissioner, you know, we have, Bill Caruth Parkway obviously is the biggest area going from 278 at Jimmy Lee Smith all the way to 278 at Wendy Bagwell, Cedar Crest Road, Seven Hills Connector is another area that's pretty large, we have intersections at East Paulding, Dallas Atworth, Nevo, Dallas, Nevo, areas like that.
All over the county.
Exactly, wherever there's turf, we're on it.
New Business item number four, is discuss action to authorize the Chairman to sign a quit claim deed to abandon a portion of the right-of-way of Old Bobo Road, so the community Yalta line is right here.
Yeah, this is basically just a housekeeping item, this was brought to our attention by John Trippgony, a surveyor in the county, and he was doing some work for a citizen, and basically, the property owner at 324 Bobo Road, they couldn't close their property because they couldn't get a clear title, so this is a very small parcel, it's less than .01 acres, tiny, we don't have any legal way to actually access it, so it's just something that's good for them and it's good for us to get off the books.
Can I have to run that?
Thank you very much, George.
Thank you.
New Business item number four, is discuss action to adopt Resolution 18-11 adopting the Paulding County branding concepts for use in the community, and we have our public information manager, Jeff Parkinson's with us, and we brought along actually a school system employee, Mr. Logan Crook, who's helped us immensely with this project.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I will keep this as quick as possible, basically, what we wanna present to you today is a logo and slogan concept we've come up to brand the county in a partnership with the Paulding County School District, we have the pleasure of working with Logan Crook, who actually created the new Paulding County School District's logo that they've recently changed, and he basically took our concept and our vision and created a simple, elegant logo that won't replace our county seal, but will try to show what sets us apart from other counties with our, highlighting our outdoor beauty and recreational advantages, our upcoming water independence, and showing the sun rising on a new day in Paulding County. With the slogan, Explore, Unwind, Thrive, explore is, there's so many places to go out in the county and explore, our parks, you know, WMA if you'd like to, the new reservoir coming soon, just plenty of areas shopping to explore in this county. Unwind kinda speaks for itself, you know, go for a run on the trail, take a bike ride on the Silver Comet, go shopping, go eat in one of the many restaurants, and then thrive, this is economic development driven, you know, we have great healthcare, we have great schools, we have great businesses here in Paulding County, so we wanted to show that you can actually thrive living here in Paulding County. With this, we look forward to building a county marketing campaign behind this, and this will also be shown prominently on the new paulding.gov web redesigned after. So with that said, do y'all have any questions?
I mean, it looks good, I like it. Thank you. I like it, and I appreciate your work and your enthusiasm about it, that's what I'm excited about the most, so thank you for that and taking the lead, and good work to both of you.
Would you comment on other people that were on your team, please?
Absolutely, I meant to do that, but it was Angela and Rebecca and myself, worked with Logan, we all got together, and it worked out great, Logan's amazing, he's really good, he can explain to you, you know, the colors we chose, and, you know, he took what we had in our minds, and quickly, we're able to put it out there real simple and elegant. All credit goes to him, he's really great.
Any comments, Logan?
No, thank you, it was a pleasure to be here and to work on it, everybody's a great team to work on it, it's been a thrill to be here.
Great, I appreciate your help and your creativity. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
New Business item number five, is discuss action to approve the May 1st, 2018 Employee Benefits Plan renewal, Mr. Brian Acker. Thank you, Brian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I appreciate the opportunity to come before you today to go over the May renewal. I'd also like to recognize and introduce a couple of folks that helped us with our benefits, from Jason Smith-Leneer, Gary Jacobs, and David Easter. They're an integral part, they're behind-the-scenes employees for all practical matters. If it wasn't for them and their assistance, we wouldn't be able to put together as comprehensive of a package as we do. Also want to thank y'all. I do this every year, I don't say this to be patronizing. We have had, established and maintained, a position with our employee benefits to be competitive, comprehensive, yet keep it cost-effective, not only to the employees, but to the citizens. And that's quite an objective, and it's also quite a challenge. And we have done that continuously through the years, and I appreciate y'all's support and help for that. It means a great deal to my staff as well as the employees. I have outlined in your backup material, and have discussed with you the proposed benefits, renewal, some good positive takeaways. We don't have any increases or changes in our life insurance costs, our disability costs, our dental plan, we had those locked in for a couple of years. But one of the key things that I've discussed with you is, we do have increases to the medical plan. We started off with a renewal, just based on underwriting formulas, which really just get to your claims history, of over 2.2 million. The renewal that was actually presented by Blue Cross was 14.7%, or about 1.8 million, and after negotiations, that's down to approximately 1.6 million. Talked to y'all, we cannot get around claims. We certainly have had a tough claims year, just to share a couple of things with you. When we talk about claims, what I'm saying is premiums paid relative to claims paid. A couple of tough months, and this is what we have the insurance for, so I don't want to make it a negative issue, but the fact of the matter is, for the last 21 months, we've paid in for every, the claims have been, or have been 93% of all money we have paid in. We have had months, in the last year, one month we had 138%. For every hundred dollars we've paid in, they've paid 138 out in claims. Another month, that was 121%, another 131%. It's hard to get around that, but that is part of what this is all about, is to take care of the welfare of our employees and their families. Over a 13-year period, I want to try to lighten this up a little bit, this is what I am proud of, and I think very appreciative of, our average over a 13-year period, yeah, this is a tough year, but over 13 years is about 4.4%. If I could come before you today and say I can give you a health insurance plan that you will only have a 4.4% renewal for the next 13 years, I would be strongly, strongly suggesting you take it. That's extremely difficult to come by, most folks are seeing double-digit increases every single year, year after year. Health inflation rate alone is about 17.5%, and if you want to see that as your renewal, you have to have about 80 to 85% of loss ratio on your premiums to claims paid. So, again, over 21-month period, we have about 93%. You understand where some of that increase comes from. There are a couple of other positive takeaways I'd like to share with you. One of the cost-saving measures we took several years ago was to implement the HRA plans. We have three different types of plans. We are seeing a migration towards those, those are more cost-effective plans. Employees who have continued to stay in the point-of-service plan, we do ask that they pay more towards the premium. It's a higher-cost plan, but they do pay more if that's their decision for them and their family. Other things, if we, if the renewal is approved, I want you to also be aware that, yeah, we absolutely do share with the employees what this cost-sharing arrangement is. We don't casually just pass out a piece of paper and let them know it's time to sign up for their benefits for the next year. We share with them the cost-sharing arrangement, we let them know how much the commission is paying for it. We also, in turn, ask that they be good consumers. We want them to understand the mechanics of their plan, we want them to thoroughly understand that, we want them to understand how they can save themselves dollars and be good consumers. That all packaged together is what helps us keep our rates down. It is a difficult challenge, as I mentioned, but that's where we're at this year. Certainly be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Yeah, Brian, I've got one, I finally had an opportunity to sit down and read over this, and you, or maybe someone from Jay Smith-Leneer, can you explain a little bit more to me the PCORI fee?
I would love to a little bit of that explanation. Do you mind coming up here, David?
This is related to the Affordable Care Act, and David comes up.
And as I've read over that, I think it's something everybody needs to know.
I think it's a good point to share. Over almost $500,000 in insurer fees related to the Affordable Care Act, and David is going to be able to explain. Corey, please. Run that, David.
It's a very small fee that came about due to the Affordable Care Act, healthcare reform. It protects you to be, on average, less than $1,000 total for the county, but it is something the county has to pay, again, due to the Affordable Care Act, and it stands for the Patient Center Outcome Research Institute, which is just kind of a big acronym, if you will, for, the fee gets paid to sort of investigate, what can we do to improve healthcare, how can we better coordinate with hospitals, doctors, pharmacists, things of that nature.
Who receives that?
It's since the IRS, and the IRS then divvies it up, or, you know, the committees that are working on that research.
Thank you.
The county does have to pay that under the law, and it's something that they write checks, records to the IRS every year.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to comment, Brian called me earlier this week, and we talked about this, and we've had that conversation since I've been in office every year, it comes up, and I just wanted to say thank you to Brian for the work that you play. This is a big number, increases are big, but they're smaller than they would have been, thanks to some negotiation and the hard work there, you and your staff. So, we do appreciate that, and your efforts to help keep that number as reasonable as possible. So, thank you there.
Appreciate that.
I'd just like to say, you know, we did the salary study, and put that in effect last year in October, I guess it showed up in November, and then I, you know, we had what, what the federal government did, I call it the little Trump bump, got a little bit because of changing the income tax. This is a, Brian, I appreciate, we spent some time together on this, in person, face to face, but this is a, it's a big, it's a big number, 1.6 million dollars, and to, for the Board of Commissioners to pass that on to the employees, that would be a tough thing to do, especially after what we've done. So, I appreciate the work, I appreciate the work you've done with Jason Smith-Leneer, but I just want everybody to know that, you know, we do this every year, and here we are in March, and this affects next year's budget. And sometimes you vote on things that affect next year's budget, but you don't get dealing with next year's budget. You might be dealing with it now, and we are, and we are working on next year's budget, but it doesn't come full circle until that date in August. But when you vote on this, this is in next year's budget, one way or another, whether it's on top of what you have now, or whether you find other places to take it so that you can pay for it. I just want to remind everybody that that does show up. It doesn't, it may not show up today, it's a vote today, but it will show up in, starting in July, voted on in August, so, but you've worked hard on it, and insurance is something we all deal with each and every year. You know where I'm at.
Count the make-up point on the, the amount that this is, breach employee, this equates to about a $2,000 per year. That's not an increase they see on their weekly, my weekly paycheck, but certainly, if they were to be absorbing this, it would be significant, $2,000 a year.
Well...
About 80 a month, a lawyer.
Yeah.
Or 80 per check average, I'm sorry.
Yeah, depending on the number of employees we have, we discussed it the other day, it's about $76.92, sir.
You wrote the number down.
I got it. And so, as we were talking about that, I was talking to department heads, and, you know, it affects some people more than others, and as a commissioner, I told you, I get it, I truly get it. And so, for our employees, we got to look out for our employees, and I expect them to work hard and look out for our citizens, and I think we've done a lot of that the last couple of years. I just, again, I just want to make the board aware that we are voting on something that will come before you on a piece of paper come August. But thank you all so much.
Great, great, Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
I'd like to recognize elected official Tim Cobb, who's here now. Thank you for being here, Tim. That's the conclusion of our regular business.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I have a question for Lonnie. New Business item number three, we're talking about the quitclaim there, the word abandoned caught my eye. Are we legally required to have a formal public hearing on that?
The remnant, no.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. We do have the need for executive session to talk about real estate and potential pending litigation, but this time I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move, we move to executive session for real estate and potential pending litigation.
Second.
Motion on the second, any discussion?
We do have several real estate issues.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five o, and we're going into executive session. We have concluded the executive session, and we will, I will call the regular session back to order, and report that no action was taken in the executive session. Any other business the Commissioners have?
Not this man.
Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn, but before I get that motion, we'd like to announce that our normal 2:00, 1400 meeting will begin at 2:30, so we will be back in here at 2:30. Appreciate everybody's patience, and we'll have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourned by Commissioner Powell, is your second?
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Colette, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned until 2:30.